All this board of selectmen's meeting to order. Due to the increasing concern surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain close to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comments period. Live video and audio of meeting will be aired on Comcast local app, local channel nine. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes of October 21st.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And because one is doing remote, I do think that we have to do, you have to do a roll call.
Roll call. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, Anderson.
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes. Except the meeting minutes of October 21st for review.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes. Vote on Sean Anderson's vacation carryover request.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to abstain.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes.
Anderson abstain.
Vote on Deborah Taylor's carryover request vacation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Anderson, yes.
Can I hand yes?
Raise yes. Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. We have selectman Anderson's appointment to the old colony planning council metropolitan planning organization. David, you want to tell us a little bit about Mary's role?
First, congratulations.
Thank you.
So four times a year, this committee, which is a subset of O Colony, will get together. They will determine, they will be told as to what there are federal funds available for projects within the OCPC area, which I believe is 21 municipalities. It stretches from Brockton all the way down to this town of Plymouth. It is made up of, I believe it's nine members, seven of them which are automatic positions based on the position that they hold, and two members from boards within that territory of a selectmen from a population of 14,001 over 14. So you will represent the one under 14. And again, it is four times a year, so once, once they call the meetings, they will notify you. And if I recall correctly, they were historically on either Tuesdays or Thursdays. But you know, that could change obviously with, with whatever that committee decides to do in the future.
Yeah, I have my first Zoom meeting with them tomorrow night. They're going to be presenting a bit about their committee and what goes on and how it works. So it's exciting.
Excellent.
Congratulations, Mary.
Thanks.
Okay. Board of Selectmen, meeting room camera equipment upgrade.
Is it okay for us to sit over there?
Yep. So Chairman raised Ben Smith from the general manager of our local cable station. He is now going to make a brief presentation to the board in reference to this.
Denise, can you hear me? Denise, can you hear me? No, I don't have a...
Yeah, I didn't set them up. Would you unmute yours? Then she might be able to hear you better from there.
Yeah.
Okay, Denise, can you hear me? Just wanted to make sure you can...
It's a little echoey, but I think I'll be okay. Go ahead.
All right, I'll talk loud. So part of our new contract with Comcast was, our big plan was to upgrade the two rooms that we have in town hall, first being the board of selectmen room. So with upgrades, that means the...
If Ben's talking, now I can't hear him at all.
Okay. Do you want me to sit over by you?
Sure.
Let's do it that way.
Pardon, can you take my seat?
Okay, hello Denise.
Hi Ben, how are you?
Good. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So as part of our contract renegotiations with Comcast, one of our big plans was a upgrade to the town hall. As of right now, the cameras and the systems are pretty out of date. They're almost 10 years old. And at this point, they're still on the standard definition settings. So they're pretty, video quality wise, it's not great. This is always our plan moving forward was upgrading the town hall since a lot of our productions and meetings are covered here. So anyways, before even COVID and the pandemic started, one of our ideas was to have the feed run back to our studio control room. And with that, be also able to control cameras, record, add in the graphics and lower titles that we have in the meetings already. So with that said, basically I'm here tonight to just, we haven't made any approvals as from the cable advisory committee moving forward. But we have gotten the quotes from our two vendors. And before we move forward, we just want to talk with the selectmen, see if you guys have any questions that you want to address that we can bring up to our event, to the two technicians who are going to be doing the work. And then at our next cable advisory board meeting, we'll probably select one. The two technicians or the two companies are AccessAV, which did this room before. And then another company called Akers Tech, which is, was bought out by the camera company. And they're just down the street in Brockton. And those two mostly work with most public access media stations in upgrading their town halls and so forth and doing studio builds. But like I said, this would require us to not be in this room. We would be at the TV studio. The feeds would come in through, over the internet actually, through a local access, a local area network setup. Through Hubtech, they would do that work. And then the rest would be done by either, or vendor, the camera company or AccessAV. The only things that, so I think one of the biggest questions or one of the big things we want to address is the fact that if we're not in the room, how do you guys know that you're recording? Or how do we know that you're recording or how do you know that you're on? The TV monitor in the back will still be connected. And that will take the fiber line that comes out that is already going, existing between town hall and the studio. So that would become like an output. So basically whatever we're recording output wise, that would come back to this TV studio that you guys could see on the monitor. It wouldn't need to be powered up. So either someone will come earlier in the day and power it up or possibly David or one of the town admin assistants could come in here and turn it on. So basically you would, your mics would be hot, but they wouldn't be live until the time for the meeting to start. So we could still actually hear you from our room, but everything would be muted until it's time for the meeting to start. Selectmen and any other officials should always assume that the mics are hot and if they're saying anything, they can mute it on you guys' end. But this would probably provide some level of trust, at least assuming that the mics are not hot, but that there's always an operator mistake that they could be left on. Overall, we would also eliminate all of that space in the corner, which would open up some more chairs for when we do have the public back in this room. So it would probably be about something similar to a small table like in the back corner. So you could open up a few more chairs for the bigger meetings that have more people attending. Trying to think if there's anything else I left out. Price wise, this is looking in between $25,000 and $35,000 for the whole process, the setup.
Is that just for this room or the other rooms?
Good question. That is just for this room. I believe, actually yes, that is just for these, for this rooms. So downstairs would just need a couple more upgrades to the cameras. And then it would need a switch converter. So in that, and we were priced at $14,000 for that. So actually, it would probably up to around 45, 50 grand. This is coming out of the cable account, which is money that comes from the cable access fees that anyone who's in town subscribes to. And as of now, that's about it. So do you guys have any questions that I could ask?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by you won't be here. So there won't be anyone here at all?
No. So this room will be, this, no one will be here. This room would be pretty much, that whole setup would be eliminated in the back. And it would just be more of a simpler modified setup. The three camera set inputs will come back to the studio control room. And one of our staff or volunteers could control the meeting, still control the PTZ cameras that are on the walls. They can add graphics, opening titles, that sort of thing. We originally had this idea, not because of the whole COVID and just trying to social distance. This is actually happened, this came to our idea a lot sooner. The idea being that sometimes we're a small staff. Sometimes the, we have to close up shop because either we're down one person or both covering two different things. So this would allow us to still stay in the studio, still keep it open for volunteers or students who might be working in the edit lab. And still cover the meetings as planned. This even, and the system that we've been quoted also has the opportunity to control from home as well if we wanted to. Overall, we still plan to be in the studio. And regardless if this is something that the selectmen aren't comfortable with, we could probably talk it out a little more. But overall, we do plan to upgrade the system in these rooms regardless. With new cameras that can shoot in high def, a simpler switcher system. But overall, we did have the goal to bring it all back to our TV studio control room.
You said you'd be able to add graphics and whatnot. Do you mean live as it's happening and you would then...
Would it just be you're recording it to publish, upload?
So we are just recording it. Once this whole COVID situation is over, going live, board of selectmen meetings going live would need approval from the board of selectmen. As of right now, we're in a special circumstance, just trying to get these meetings out to the public by any means necessary. But once the public can come back into the room, these meetings will be recorded and then rebroadcasted at a later date. If I did want to go live, I would, you know, come to the, that would need a vote from the selectmen. So it, so once it did get set up, it would just be a recording that comes back. And then afterwards, it would just go online or on air.
Would there be a way to turn on a light or something to show it when it's live?
Sorry. It would, there, so that on air light actually can be turned on with a light switch right there. But unfortunately, having a power tally light is very tough. So there is no, so the monitor would have to be the way that you would know. So for the, so for example, to just kind of run through a scenario, the, what we, before 7 o'clock, what would be running would be our typical agenda that we have before the meeting starts. So you would see that up there that would be running. And that's kind of a good indicator that we're going. I can also call David or call Lorna and just let them know that we're all set to go. We'll be, things are running up smoothly. Once the chairman says, okay, we're ready to start the meeting, they will see that the shot will then switch over to a live signal feed. It might be a wide shot, it might be a close up on the chairman. And then the chairman will know that, and the rest of the selectmen will know that they are being recorded and it is going out live and that there is someone back at the studio.
There must be a way to turn a light on here. I mean, I can turn lights on at home from my phone from work. And we could put a Wi-Fi adapter. I mean, and there's a lot of other technology that we could incorporate here to kind of add a light. Add a, I know I relied on it a lot when I was chairman of the finance committee. I would always be looking at the camera to see what's being broadcast and where. So I would know when I could take a drink of water or whatever.
I can address it with the technicians again, see if there's a possibility and see what they say. I do know that that was something I did bring up, was an on air, was if there were a way to get the on air light. It did seem sort of a, kind of a stretch to get basically from the studio power source all the way back here. I mean, with the, what you were saying with your house being able to turn on the lights via...
I know those are plug-ins, but there's all sorts of things like that.
Might be a plugin, it might just be, have to be an additional plugin. I know with that right there, it's just that switch right over there that we flip physically. But yeah, tally lights, unfortunately.
Doesn't it also turn on out there in the hallway so people know?
Yep.
So that might be important as well, just so that people who aren't in the room are aware as well.
I am. Basically the same thing, I would think it was either, you know, Lorna or somebody could come and just flip the switch right when they come in. Granted, it's not recording at that exact moment, but it's still kind of the, pretty close to the moment. I just got to make sure it's flipped off if you know the...
You have to be really strict about it because otherwise people will just ignore it.
Yeah. Those are the...
Ben.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Ben, did you also say that it could be, not purposely, but left on? And it could be recording the next day, it could still be, the mics could be on?
Well, we could stop the recording and then we would stop the, anything like that. At that point, it's also up to anybody in here. You guys could just flip, turn it off once it goes into executive session. You would probably see the monitor cut to black, which is a good indication that we've stopped recording on our end and we've shut everything down. And that you guys can just shut down as well.
I'm thinking about, you know, about people that may choose to use the selectmen's office during the week as just a place to go have a confidential conversation. So we probably want to make sure they understand how to ensure it's turned off.
Yep. And I think pretty much making sure that there's some sort of switch that's lit up when it's powered on is probably the best indicator for that. I think for the most part, I think, you know, the day of the selectmen meeting, probably an hour, a couple hours before, somebody will come in and power it all up. We'll do a quick test, just make sure everything's running. And then for the most part, you'll just kind of have to wait and be on standby.
And how many meetings will you be able to record at the same time?
It'll still, we'll still have to probably discuss, it would still probably be one at a time. So if there's say assessors in selectmen going at the same time or something like a planning board and stuff, it would probably be a separate setup for that or a separate recording for that. However, the meetings that overlap don't tend to necessarily happen a lot. But yeah.
So Ben, a couple of things. Denise, were you, were you done? I didn't want to jump in if you were talking. So I was a little confused about it. When we talked about this before, I thought that part of the intent is that while you were at the school, if there are multiple meetings going on in the building, you would be able to monitor all of them at the same time.
Not all of them. I would have to double check with our technician. But I think recording one and then possibly recording a second one. If not all inputs are being used, then that is a possibility. But now that I'm more able to think about it, I think it would be that if say, planning board and selectmen were happening at the same time, just like now, but same way it is now, we have to decide which one takes over the priority.
No, I know. I thought that was one of the primary motivations. Like you said, there's only two of you, so that way one person could do multiple meetings at the same time.
That would be, yeah, unfortunately, I think I did, I do remember saying yes to that. I think I misunderstood the question. But yeah, it would only be covered, recording one at a time. Primary goal was more or less to try to keep, focus on keeping our studio open during the hours and not having these in and out, in and out, keeping it open. Yeah, so most for, most part our big goal is to keep it open, the studio open and just keep it.
So I would echo Meredith's concern about this. When I came here, we didn't have it. You recall, we put it in.
Yep.
And we did it because people were congregating in the hallway and they were loud. And so that's why we had it on both hallway and here, so that way everybody would know that they were on air so they didn't talk with a hot mic. And people in the hallway were aware to hopefully not be as loud because even though the door is closed, it could still be disruptive. So you're right, we could do the old fashioned thing of just like this. But it sounds like if we're spending $35,000 just to do this room, it just seems like there should be, within that budget, there's got to be some way that we're going to tie it in. And I would hope that we could have an indicator light in here because the microphone should never be on except for a meeting. Like I don't want it to be incumbent on someone to say, oh, I have to remember to hit mute because during the week, we sometimes do like a selectman, I will come in here and have a conversation. And certainly the public shouldn't be privy to that.
Oh yeah.
And I would also, I, we never discussed this, I know this is a little unfair. But it's, when the mic is hot, you will hear us, but we won't be able to communicate with you. So is there any way that we could have a two-way communication installed at the same time? So for example, like at the beginning of the meetings, we always say, Ben, are you ready? We can't even do that now, right? We could have to make the assumption, we say, are you ready? We can't hear you. We have to make the assumption you are.
Yes, you will.
So is there any way we could have two-way communication, at least verbally, so we could hear each other?
I will address that. Trying to think of the best way that that would be a setup or addressed. To answer your question with the, with the mics, when they are active, a green light will be lit on. So if you were say having a private meeting in here, these mics were on the table or on the floor, if you saw the green lights on, that would be an indicator that there's something active. It could be that thing, that thing is still on. But a two-way communication, it might just be a simple text, it might be a simple text message on the side that Lorna or anyone who's offering would be there to see. There is, I think that is kind of the big gray area is trying to have the two-way communication. It's just difficult to have, well, it's not difficult, but it's just going to be possibly just another setup to have some sort of physical communication. I don't know if that's like intercom or if that's...
Worst case, the speakerphone.
Worst case, the speakerphone, yeah.
Is there going to be a disk still on your end?
A disk?
Yes.
Like recording to disk? Yeah, we can still record to disk.
I'm only asking because a lot of times when we used to have line meetings, which in the budget season, sometimes we are, you'll know in the middle of the meeting, you have to say, stop for one second while I switch the disk. So if you're over at the school and you had to switch the disk in real time, we can't communicate, we won't know to stop.
It would be disk, but we'd also be recording straight to the computer directly. And that digital file is probably, would be our master file anyways. But unless there's no other questions, I think I'll take this back. Tomorrow, I'll give a call to both technicians talking about communication and power and see what they can bring up. Then I can come back again and address those with the board if they want. I know I wasn't looking for a vote today, but just more or less just trying to get some idea. I know it's kind of different, it might be a little scary to some sorts. Because it is, we are putting a lot of big trust in each other. And if I was to leave and somebody else was to come replace me, you know, you're putting in with kind of a new person to make sure that they're all set up. Obviously, you know, a little bit trained. But I will say, for example, school committee meets in the school. Their mics are hot, their mics when they're, right before the meeting starts. But nothing, we can hear it, but nothing goes out because we can designate that we can listen to them. But we also designate that the stream that goes out isn't actually, that is muted. So that's something that we're, we've already been doing for a while with school committee. You know, we hear them talking back and forth and they just start the meeting as soon as the gavel, as soon as they're ready, they just gavel the meeting. We have usually a two second delay that we boost up the audio so that they can, so that start the meeting going forward. And as soon as they adjourn, goes right back down. It's the first thing we do.
And you said these are high def?
High def cameras, yes.
Do we get with a makeup and hair team?
Lighting, all of that, yeah.
Oh, is there going to be new lighting? That's actually a good point.
But we will also connect the projector as a, as a fourth input as well.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
No, thanks, Ben.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
I was muted. Sorry about that. Thank you, Ben. Okay, correspondence from the public to determine the course of action? No one. Public comment period, we're not doing that. Town administrators report. David?
Thank you, ma'am chairwoman. So first is, is our COVID-19 update as we do every single meeting. I do have some positive news. The last time that we met, we had 13 active cases. And unfortunately, we had transitioned into a red town, which meant that after you were a red town for three consecutive weeks, you were then designated as a high risk community. We've been there for two weeks. And we did a video, I don't know if you had any chance to see it, but we did a video with town officials because quite frankly, we still only have a handful of cases. So it's a little unfair to say with a handful of cases, you're a high risk community. But that's just because we're a small town by population. But the good news is, is that 10 of those cases have now cleared. And so we only have three active cases now. So assuming that we don't get another case or another three cases between now and Thursday, we expect on Thursday, when DPH comes up with their upgrade, with their weekly output, we'll be back in the gray area. So we will never have been designated as a high risk community.
Do you mean Thursday tomorrow or Thursday next week?
I'm sorry, Thursday tomorrow.
Oh.
Yep, they come out every Thursday, but they're supposed to come out at 4:00, although they've been late the last couple of weeks. And so we anticipate, I don't know why I was thinking it was two days from now. But we anticipate that Thursday tomorrow is that because we're down to three, is that we should drop out of the red category. So hopefully that's the case. Another positive note is that the Baker administration has made available $50 million for small businesses. I asked Lorna, and Lorna did a nice job. We've already posted this link onto our website and onto our Facebook page. We know that our local businesses have been hurt. Exactly what the parameters of the grant is, I don't know because they would have to apply and go through the process. But there is some relief. West Bridgewater is fortunate to have a lot of small mom and pop stores or retailers or businesses in town that live here and work here. And so as a result, if we can get the word out to make sure that they have some access to some funds to hopefully help their situation, I want to make sure it's available. In speaking to the chairwoman when this first came out, she was, you know, she was the one that really wanted to put, place it on the agenda and make sure that everybody in town knew. Denise, was there anything else you wanted to say about that?
I am having trouble hearing you a bit, David, if you can speak up.
Yeah, sure. I was just saying, was there, did, was there anything else in reference to that that you want to speak to?
No, I just want to make sure we get the word out as much as possible to the local businesses in town. This is a, a good opportunity under some unfortunate circumstances that hopefully, you know, they can benefit through these grants.
Next on the agenda is, the unfortunate part is that we have additional restrictions that have been announced by the governor on Monday evening. For the first time now, is that he has ordered a curfew in the state from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. It's a limited curfew. There are certainly exemptions and exclusions for it. But what really matters to all of us is that the order requires that all retailers, including liquor stores and restaurants and a whole host of other businesses, that they must all close by 9:30, which would allow people travel time because in theory, after 10 o'clock, you should be home. So that's the order. There is also in addition to the order is that there is now a mandatory mask wearing whenever you are out in public. Before, it was always you could wear a mask or you could be, if you were six feet away from somebody or more. Now, when you are in public, it is requiring that everybody wear a mask regardless of whether or not you're within six feet. And in addition to that, the indoor number that can... And in addition to that, the indoor, uh, number that cannot be exceeded still remains at twenty-five people. So that has not changed. There are some other changes. For example, private residences, they used to allow twenty-five people indoors, can only allow ten. Um, and, uh, but I think the most critical part of this is for the board to know is that one, there is a curfew in town now, uh, throughout the entire state, the mandatory mask wearing. And that the local police department, which again, I'm trying not to, I, I, I hate to opine, but our local police department now has been tasked with the enforcement, not just at the state level and the Board of Health. And quite frankly, I really don't want my police department running around fighting people because they're not wearing a mask. I think they have pretty important business to do, but they have now been tasked with that as per the governor's order. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them. Um, next on the agenda is a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's a fine if you're not wearing your mask?
Yeah, I think it's five hundred dollars per, that might, one might be three hundred. There's two fines. There's one if you continue to remain open, it's five hundred dollars per violation. And if you're not wearing your mask, it's either three hundred or five hundred. I don't have it in front of me, but I think, I think that one is five hundred as well, but it could be three. Uh, next on the, I'm sorry, okay. Next on the agenda is a letter from the Attorney General's Office. Whenever we have a town meeting, we have our annual town meeting on June twenty-ninth, um, over the summer, is that whenever we do a general bylaw change or a zoning bylaw change, is that there is mandatory that they get sent off to the Attorney General's Office because the Attorney General's Office reviews it to make sure, one, it's legal, meaning you can't pass a bylaw or a general bylaw that is inconsistent with state law, and it cannot be discriminatory. Uh, so they make that review. Articles thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, articles thirty had to do with the solar fields. And thirty-one, thirty-two had to do with the digital signs. There were really two bylaws grouped, uh, one bylaw grouped as two because of the way our zoning reads. Uh, so they have passed the review of the Attorney General's Office. However, there was a procedural error from the planning board because they did not post the meeting in advance for their public hearing enough days in advance. So as a result, uh, the town clerk was notified, she must post a notice for the town. So we have placed that in the newspaper and we have also placed that on the bulletin board. Normally, once we receive the letter from the Attorney General's Office, it takes effect. But because we are noticing the public, if there was this defect, it will take effect after November twenty-first. Again, just providing enough, I, to the board. Scotland Street. I'm sorry, Denise?
No, I just said, okay.
Okay. Um, Scotland Street traffic study. Um, board members have, have, um, have voiced their concern in reference to Scotland Street. We know that with the advent of additional, uh, commercial in, in, infrastructure in Bridgewater, that immediately it adjoins Scotland Street, that there's more traffic there. And so I asked OCPC through their engineering department as to whether or not they would do a traffic study. I have placed some of the findings in here for you. Basically, we've come up with what we all know, is that there is more commercial traffic on that road than existed before. And quite frankly, as we did with River Street, it exceeds the metric or the minimum metric for commercial vehicles in a residential area, which would allow, in normal situations, to place a restriction for heavy commercial vehicles. However, in the letter from the engineering firm, they also say that it's highly unlikely that a restriction could be placed on Scotland Street because part of the regulation through mass DOT is that you cannot prevent traffic from immediately accessing commercial or industrial property that they're accessing or attempting to access. So Scotland Street, unfortunately, because it immediately is contiguous to an industrial, commercial area in Brockton, um, in Bridgewater, we would not be able to get another exclusion. So we have the information. It confirms what we all know. I think it's a point for the board to know that. And for us, because again, I think we're all empathetic to the, to the plight of the residents that live up there. And to let them know, we have done the study, they're entirely correct, there is too much commercial traffic. Unfortunately, the way the permitting process works with mass DOT, we would not be able to put an exclusion. Um, next on the agenda, Marilyn Madder does a great job at the Council on Aging. We used to always do three daily lunches, um, and where, where seniors would come in. We would serve people, had, they would have lunch and it would be a nice social event. Obviously, because of COVID, we couldn't do that. However, Marilyn came up with a really nice grab-and-go luncheon program. So seniors, every single day can come in, they, 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 um, they make an appointment so we know how many lunches to make, for example. Uh, but they make an appointment. It's all the same process that they're used to doing because there was appointment process beforehand. And they line up in their car and they go out and they provide them their daily lunch. So we get about fifty people per day, so it's still a nice turnout. We make sure that seniors have access to a nice nutritional lunch. It keeps our senior staff doing what they love to do and allows seniors and the COA staff to continue to integrate and involve with each other. So again, I just figured the board would like to know. And the last is, is that, um, one-eleven F is state Massachusetts general law pertaining to workers' comp for police and fire. We had a police officer that was involved in an accident, no fault of his own. He was hit while doing a, um, a detail by a police, by, by an oncoming car. He endured injuries. He was in the car. There was not major injuries. He was out of work for close to a week. He has settled a private lawsuit against that person because obviously that person was at fault. But under the one-eleven claim is that whenever that occurs, we are reimbursed for a, a majority of our payroll expenses. Came out to be about a thousand dollars, not a lot because he wasn't out of work that much. Um, it was a lot of work for not a lot of money, but in the end, I just wanted to let you all know that we were able to recoup what is legally ours. I've placed the, um, the release of claims in the package so you could see it. I've signed it. Town council has reviewed it. And we will process it so we can receive that payment. And that is my report.
Can I ask?
Could we take a step back? I'm sorry, Mary.
No, go ahead, Denise.
I, I was going to ask if we could take a step back to Scotland Street. Could we go back to the letter that we received? Thank you. Um, so in reading this, you know, they're saying that it's highly unlikely. So it's not that it's a, it definitely couldn't happen. So I'm wondering what sort of hurdles might we, other than the fact that it is in direct access to industrial? I get that. Um, but is, is that what would shut it down completely from them considering having the no heavy vehicles on that, on that street? Is that in itself enough to shut, to, that we can't get it?
Yeah, so the answer is yes. He used, I mean, I spoke to Bill. So the reason he uses highly unlikely is he's not the final decision maker. He can't speak for mass DOT. But Bill's been doing this probably for forty years. Um, he, he's, um, he's the go-to person. But with that said, and again, I've read the regulation because I had to read the regulation and know it and understand it when it pertained to River Street. So two items. One is, is that it cannot be immediately contiguous to an industrial, commercial area because commercial, industrial vehicles have a right to be able to access where it is that they were going to. And you must, if you are going to provide, I mean, if you're going to provide an exclusion or require an exclusion, you must provide an alternative route. And it has to be reasonable. So on River Street, for example, it was reasonable to tell truckers, you can't drive down River Street because you want to cut off Route one oh six when it's literally a quarter of a mile away. The only way that you would be able to access Elm Street in Bridgewater, if you don't go down Scotland, is to travel down Route twenty-four. You would be adding multiple miles to that trip. So that's why Bill says in his letter, he says it's highly unlikely due to the fact that, of the, uh, heavy commercial area in Bridgewater and Elm Street. And he also says, in a lack of a turnoff for trucks at the timeline. I mean, that you have to provide an additional access. So if somebody's in Bridgewater and they want to, and they have to make their way to, say, Halifax or Brockton, the only way that they can do it is to travel down Scotland Street or to require them to go down one oh four, up one oh six, uh, up twenty-four, around to one oh six. You're requiring way too many miles. That's, you, the, the, mass DOT is not going to approve that, and that's what he's alluding to.
And what would it take to get it in front of mass DOT? Would there be an application fee? Would we have to have more engineering written up? I'm just wondering, even though he's saying it's highly unlikely, he's not saying it's impossible. Could we still send it on to mass DOT?
We could send it off to, I would put it on the next agenda. We would, you would have to take a vote to say that, what's your alternate route? And if you want to go on record saying that they're going to drive down one oh four, up twenty-four, in some other route, go on record for doing that, we'll pass it on to mass DOT. I mean, that's, that would be the process and then we would wait.
Well, what's the downside?
Yeah, I think, I think I'd rather go on record doing that than see someone on that street get killed. Um, and the, the, the traffic's really bad down there. Uh, they, they've come to us several times. And I know I'm using the extreme of someone getting killed, but, I mean, they literally lost all of the peaceful enjoyment of their homes. And if it's a matter of sending it off to mass DOT and they require us to put down what the alternate route is, then we put it down. Um, but I think we should do it.
Okay, we'll place it on the next agenda.
Okay. Uh, I mean, Anthony, Mary, do you have any comments on that?
No, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I think we should at least try. Um, I, I don't know, I don't hear what the harm is in trying. Um, so I would say let's, why not?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well, Denise.
Okay. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
No, I had a question on, um, it said the Council on Aging Grab and Go Luncheon. It says specifically Veterans Day. Is there something special going on that day?
There is.
Oh.
Um, yeah, so the Grab and Go Luncheon is what we do on, now on a daily basis. In addition to that, there's also going to be a luncheon on November ninth. Um, so, um, I believe you all received an invitation from Marilyn. And Walter Thayer will be there representing the veterans. Children are going to be there from the school. We're going to hand out flags. It's going to be the best that we can do because there is no Veterans Day parade this year. So it's going, we're going to do the best that we can do to still honor veterans on that day and thank them for their service. I will certainly be there as well. So, um, if you believe that you'll be able to make it, it's usually around eleven, eleven fifteen is when it starts. Um, please let me know and we'll make sure that we pass it along to Marilyn. Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, no, I'd love to attend.
Okay. If there's nothing else to discuss, I would ask for a motion to a juror.
Would you like to make a motion to a juror?
Second.
All those in favor?
Anderson, aye.
Can you hand yes?
Raise yes. Thank you.